I'm ready to be meeting the order September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Welcome to ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
In the light of the United States of America. To deliver public orders of justice for all. All kinds of cases. All kinds of cases to be addressed. Under God, one and one in this world.
I'd like to start the meeting and just have a moment of silence for HBD detectives up there in Houston, one has lost his life and I would like to have a moment of silence for those guys. Bring those to the show. Thank you. Do we have a sound? We see a public hearing is. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. I skipped. Yes, roll call, please.
Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor from Timbers.
Here.
Alderman Green. From Alderman Mandray.
Here.
Alderman Woman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman. Here, here, we have an order.
Thank you, ma'am. And we have a public hearing establishing the city of Jamaica Beach fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two property tax rate of point one seven zero four nine seven per one hundred dollar value. Any?
We have two. We have one on the phone, Andrea Spearing, and then we have Ms. Talbot who's wanting to speak.
Awesome.
About the comments.
Okay.
Ms. Spearing, do you want to go first?
Sure. My business Andrea Spearing, one six six one seven Jamaica Beach Road. Uh, thank you so much for having the put in option. I really appreciate that as a part-time resident and full-time voter that I have the option to partake in the city council meeting. I want to thank you very much for that opportunity. I just had two comments. Um, the first is I'm not really clear on why we are moving from a city administrator to the three-pronged um, level. So now that you have single city administrator to have three people currently under there. I don't quite understand how, why that's a direction we want to go. And then my second, uh, area of interest is in light of last week's storm, whether beachfront residents would be allowed to replenish the dunes in front of their homes as we were after last summer's storm. So I, I know we had to get filed for with the GLO, um, last year to replenish our dunes. But I firmly believe my dunes would not be there today if I had not done the replenishment after last summer's storm. So I'm hoping that we have the opportunity to do that again following this summer's storm. And hoping that the storm last week was the last one of the season. But thanks very much for allowing me to speak and I look forward to hearing responses at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Next.
Ms. Talbot.
Deputy Tapper, one six nine one six, Jamaica Beach, Homer. Thank you for filling up on here. Um, we again suffered catastrophic flooding in our neighborhood with the storm. But we had flooding six to eight inches in the rain that came Sunday night into Monday before the storm. So this, again, this is not a storm surge issue. This is a rain issue. This is a no drainage issue. This is thirteen years of all of you ignoring our problem. And shame on you. Shame on you. Our neighborhood is aging. We are seventy years old and, uh, and you are leaving it to us to clear our neighborhood when we have just a rainstorm. No solution, no plan, no communication from anybody. Nobody showed up. I flagged Brad down on the beach Monday morning when we already had the pump set up because we had six to eight inches of water in our neighborhood. We were working at seven thirty Monday morning to try to clear some of the rainwater. We worked all day on Monday. Eric and Bob Sarp were out there at midnight in the middle of that storm pumping. Our pump went down. We weren't able to pump on Tuesday. We weren't able to pump on Wednesday. We were promised by Brad Heinman on Monday morning that he would get two pumps and manpower to help us. Never saw a pump, never saw a person, never saw anything. There's a reason that seventy-year-old people are not firemen. That's because a hundred and fifty feet of two-inch hose is heavy. And it is laborious trying to do this. Our neighborhood is not sitting back going fix the problem. We have worked, we have worked tirelessly to try to have a neighborhood that's not underwater. And we get nothing. We get nothing from you. I called you Mayor Morris on Thursday afternoon after Eric and I had spent all day on the pumping pool. And the response I got back from you was we're monitoring it. I would just really like you to explain to me what good it does to monitor it. When are you going to help us? I, I, I'm not sure at what point to do. I, I contacted Mace Middleton, Joe Gucci. I thought a formal complaint. Okay. I have a question. Will anybody respond to me ever? Based on the comments?
Uh, yes. Uh, next person. Oh, that's it? Okay. Next item of the discussion is a public hearing for establishing the city Jamaica Beach fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two property tax rate of point one seven oh four nine seven per one hundred dollar value. Do we have any more?
Open the text.
Okay, items for discussion. Discuss, discussion and take action for the approval of the following minutes. Workshop and regular meeting for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Public hearings and special meeting August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And public hearing September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, may I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
One second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I didn't get to go through the notes, so I'm hoping that my other peers did. I just simply, I'm.
I went, I went through them and made some suggestions, um, to, that be, that were, one word was accept instead of accept. Those kind of things, so.
Is that the only one you found?
That's the only one I found.
We have coverage for that. Okay, do we, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Got two votes. One abstaining. Three. Oh, I didn't hear Marcy, I'm sorry.
Oh, the first was David.
Okay, I did not hear you. Discussion, consideration and take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six implementing the requirements of SV thirteen fifty-nine and section six fourteen dot zero one five local government code establishing mental health. Leave policy for the police officers in preventing an effective date year of. Do we want any lives related on that for staff? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, obviously in the eighty-seventh legislature, there's been a lot of bills, phenomenal amount of bills that have come across and were approved. Uh, one of them was this bill that's concerning, um, health, uh, mental health for police officers act. And basically in the act, uh, it's, it's being acknowledged now more than ever that officers like many members of the military are having post-traumatic stress disorder and other disorders affecting mental health. And, and by accepting this, that would, it would allow the city, uh, to view any claims by police officers to be evaluated in a mental health capacity, just like they would any other on-the-job injury, uh, like in a car wreck or getting shot or whatever the case may be.
Question?
Why now? What brought this to?
The legislature has expected us to pass the bill, all the cities are conforming to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ready to vote? If we do a roll call vote. Marcy? I'm, I'm sorry.
We need a motion to.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct.
I'll make the motion, I'll say it.
I'll second that.
If we roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Looks like motion carries. Discussion, consideration, take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight adopting the operating budget for the general fund and municipal fund of City Jamaica Beach fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Any discussion? Thank goodness it's over and thank you staff for all that work.
I agree.
The, the number I see is two four oh nine three twenty-eight. Code.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking at this budget will raise the same amount of money down in the last paragraph. FY twenty twenty-one, general fund budget for all funds would be two four oh nine three twenty-eight, two million four hundred and nine thousand.
What are you seeing now?
Isn't that last paragraph?
That's perfect. Third.
Oh, that's the total, that's the total amount is revenue.
Yeah.
That is your revenue.
Yes.
Total, yes.
And it's balanced, so that's it. Okay, that's what I thought I'd do.
Ready to vote?
There wasn't a lot of work done in this. Yeah, make a motion we've all want.
Okay. Russell? My second. In favor, in favor? You?
Yes, I am in favor.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Number four. Discussion, consideration, take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine establishing the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two property tax rate for City Jamaica Beach voter approved rate of point one seven zero four nine seven per one hundred dollar value. Like to have a motion to discuss?
Did you just skip the round?
Number four?
He's right, he's right.
I'm sorry, I skipped around.
We have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? Uh, Russell, you want to start the vote?
In favor.
Yes, I am in favor.
Yes.
Motion carries. Discussion, consideration, take action to approve the ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten adopting the twenty eighteen international swimming pool and spa code and the twenty eighteen international property code excluding appendix A. I guess that means include, is that?
Yes.
Excluding.
Okay.
Oh, okay, in the, in the handout, excluding it in the, yes, ma'am. Have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
In a second?
I'll second. Yeah, I understand.
I, 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 I don't understand that.
Can you explain it?
Oh, well, yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
The adoption of the twenty eighteen, uh, international swimming pool and spa code is also coming from the eighty-seventh legislature. On September first, two twenty-one, the state mandated that certain requirements be approved for pools and spas. This stemmed from the death of a young, of a seven-year-old called Virginia Grammy. She was subbed in by a spa jet and she, she died unfortunately. So legislature, yeah, she died in two thousand and two. Legislature many years later is now mandating certain things for the pools and the spas that, that make them a lot safer. So the adoption of this is to make, to be able to enforce safety in our swimming pools. Uh, we're talking about drain covers, uh, the draining systems, the, um, handicap requirements. Um, the good thing about it is there are certain, certain states can apply for grants, so there is granting available with adoption of this and we will definitely pursue it. Also, um, there is required education. There's five millions, five million dollars that were allocated to education and that's going to be done by Consumer Product Safety Commission. So it does not fall on us to provide that education. So we're asking that this be approved for the city. It will make us basically legal with the state and we'll be at the same standards with the state. With property maintenance code twenty eighteen, it's to be able to establish a guideline for properties that have blight, and, and make, have a standard, a minimum standard for structural conditions. You know, housing is a key social determinant of public health. And many, there are many factors that establish safety in the home, the piping, the electric, all the AC, the structural. Um, they have to be maintained properly, otherwise it just deters on the community. You know, the, the concept of health, healthy homes extend way beyond the four walls of the building because no house exists in isolation, their neighborhoods. So your neighbor is going to inherently affect you if they're not maintaining their property to at least a minimum standard. And the reason why we're asking that appendix A be excluded is appendix A deals with how you're going to board your structure. And personally, when their hurricane hype is coming, you know, you board your structure and you want to board it because I'm not going to be sitting there saying how many nails you can. But with that said, uh, I'm open to any questions, any questions?
Um, with the pool or spa terrains, are, I'm, I'm sure that our city pool meets those standards?
As far as I know right now, yes, but we do have, uh, the lift that's out. So we are going to dig near the lift and we'll, we'll do a close inspection to ensure that everything's up to date.
That's great. Thank you.
Are we going to have to spend money on our pool to comply with this?
For the lift, but that was in the minute of us adopting it.
It's a good thing, I was just curious.
We, we were going to have to fix that.
Here. You see any of this in here? I'm missing it.
In the. It should be page, uh, page forty-nine to fifty-eight on your packet and resist these.
Behind the voting.
What about existing structures? Are they going to have to go back and make these changes to become compliant? Is the city going to force that?
Property maintenance code?
No, I'm sorry, on the pool and spa.
On the pool and spa? There are certain things that will have to be compliance, like the self-latching fences and it will have to have the fence. We, I, I didn't have that intention and I don't think it's obligated to, like, they are doing top of inspection to see if they are compliant. Most of these systems are already in existence because, like I said, uh, Virginia died in two thousand and two. And yet pool manufacturers started implementing safety regulations since two thousand and four because.
I know we're doing the self-latching gates, the doors with the alarms. I think that's already been lately being enforced. But, uh, on item number one that covers a safety pool cover and item number four, a pool alarm, a device designed to provide rapid detection of entry into the water? Are we going to implement and enforce those items also?
Existing is an existing, not a new one.
Okay, what about a new construction?
New construction. But it's the same standard that the state is setting. It's, it's standard that the state, this, this state bill, House Bill twenty-eight fifty-eight. It's a, um, it's a federal regulation, so we're just basically coming up to the minimum standards of the state and of the, the, the.
I understand. This is basic homework. I need to read it further in detail, but it's telling me that we're going to need safety pool covers and also every pool is going to need a water detection alarm. It's under.
It's drain, drain covers. It's not the pool cover that's up against the drain cover. So when you, if, if there's a drain, not all pools have drains, but if there's a drain, there's a cover, so not, you can't get subbed in there. It's not a cover for the whole pool. It's just for that, that little drain. One inch or so of drain.
So are we approving the whole ordinance or just that section?
The.
That's the drain covers?
Well, well, the safety drain covers, uh, the drain systems that are compliant with, with AC, which is the, um, basically the handicap standards.
Action. These items were already in there.
Yeah, this is a, it's pretty extensive.
And what I've included in there, uh, that, that's not part of the ordinance. I've included the House bill. So House Bill twenty-eight fifty-eight is included in the packet. It, that's, that's not what we're adopting. That's just, uh.
This is the whole.
Supplement. Yeah, so that's what the, what the state is requiring. We're adopting our ordinance.
And all we think has been changed to the ordinance is the drain covers?
And, and we're adopting the, the code, the code book. If you set this down, we don't, we don't have, we, we base everything up on international residential code or international commercial code when it comes to pools. We don't have the pool code itself.
Yeah, section fourteen oh six, minimum state requirements. That's not set by.
That's by.
That's not by municipality, that's by the state.
That's in House number twenty-eight.
And so now what the state is saying is everyone must have basic access-related safety devices and equipment requirements to be considered in establishing minimum state requirements for swimming pools and spas under subsection A one, the commission shall consider the following requirements. Now, that's not saying that's, it says a safety pool cover, pool alarm, doors, gates. That's not saying that it is.
What page are you on?
Uh, well, it's not number.
It's under C, basic access-related safety devices. Fourteen oh six.
Yes, fourteen oh six.
This is not.
Subparagraph three.
Right, this is not your ordinance. This, uh, this is the Virginia Grammy Safety Act.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I included that so you could see why, uh, why we were requesting this. But. Yeah, the appendixes here are just additional information to supplement what, how we got here.
This is not saying that we're required.
We, we're not going to go and say you have to, in the city of Jamaica Beach, you have to be compliant with the Virginia safety. We, we are not adopting the Virginia safety. We're adopting the pool and spa maintenance code, which is.
The state, Texas state.
Right, and it's, it's the, the group of codes that we've been operating in for years. So we've been operating on the international code council codes. And, and I'm sorry that, that it's confusing. I just wanted you all to have the background information as to how we got to those requirements for the.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yes.
So specifically.
These two pictures. Sorry about the confusion. The only thing we are.
You don't understand our shape, right?
Only good is this. This is what works, work. These, these hours. The ordinance there.
Divide from. Holy peace.
So these are, like, like I just said, these, these, some of these codes, we're just adopting because the state is telling us.
The state telling us that you have, you have to enforce them by September first.
Okay.
Twenty-one.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I apologize, guys, but I'm, you still know what I have. I see we have an ordinance, it says. Penitent.
What seems we are adopting what the state is telling us we missed about on this?
We've got enough alarms, I guess.
I mean, it's part of what the state's requiring.
For fencing around the hall.
Yeah, fencing with poles.
Any more discussion? Uh, I could do a vote. Marcy?
Yes. Yes.
I don't understand it. I still don't understand it. No problems.
Absolutely.
I'm in favor.
Uh, motion carries. Next item. Number six, discussion, consideration, take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven, amending and restating ordinance number ninety-nine dash seven establishing the positions of co-city administrators providing for sever, severability, providing for the repeal of all or parts of ordinance in conflict here in, and providing for an effective.
or parts of ordinance in conflict herein, and providing for an effective day. Basically, what we're doing is the house cleaning that we don't talk about, where, um, in the, the other ordinances refer to something that's city administrator, it now refers to all the directors, it's just a house cleaning.
Hi.
I'm sorry, uh, do I have a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
One second.
Now, discussion, sorry, don't, don't be embarrassed.
Thank you. I, um, find this confusing because in this ordinance, it says that, um, um, it, as shown in the attached organizational chart, and there is no organizational chart in, um, agenda packet. So to understand this, I mean, I mean, I kind of have an idea from what you've given us, but in the ordinance itself, since you're referring to that chart twice, this makes no sense.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Also, if I may? I looked up, um, the old, um, ordinance from, from, um, how the city administrator was originally done, and, um, it's basically a reprint of this, but it does not explain or give each director, um, responsibility or accountability. I realize that they may blend a little, but if I have a question about finances, of course, I would know to go to Debbie. If I have a question about director of, of operations or safety, it doesn't really make it clear. This is pretty much word for word, as I can best understand from the old ordinance about city administrators. So again, doesn't make it clear.
Okay, it most of it's done in SOPs. Now, the older ordinance you're looking at, it doesn't refer to every job responsibility for the city administrator, does it?
No.
Okay, and that, and that's, that's all covered in SOPs versus, versus all spelled out in the ordinance? Or job description?
Yeah.
Or job description.
Also...
Brad, anyone else who add to this?
Also...
Oh, no, don't, sorry, go ahead.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Um, this also refers to, um, um, a treasurer. And so I, that's, you know, I've never heard of a treasurer in, um, as city staff.
A what?
It refers to a treasurer.
A treasurer?
Right. Thank you.
Uh, the, uh, obviously, when the, and, and I'm so sorry that the org chart was not attached to this, that it, it should have been part of the packet, and we can give that copy to you guys. Um, the, the city ordinance that established the responsibilities of a city administrator, um, ninety-nine point seven, um, had to be amended because of the directorship responsibility. We sent all this information to the city attorney, he drafted this ordinance himself, so it would be a legal document and, and the action to be taken for anything that, as the mayor alluded to, anything that, in any area of the ordinance or any resolution they call for city administrator, and one of the three directors, um, has a responsibility or in that area, in that, um, actual specific duty, um, in question. Uh, so this, this is our ordinance, has been written by the city attorney to amend the original, uh, city administrative ordinance.
If we didn't do this blanket ordinance, we would have to go through every ordinance item and change the order from city administrator and redidate those duties. So the way I understand it, is this is a blanket to cover us, there's a group.
That is correct.
Instead of one by one.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So what about the treasurer, was that just a...
That's, that's part of, uh, financial director's responsibilities of the Department of Treasury. This treasury financial director is just a, uh, kind of a main living board.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any discussion?
I understand what you're saying, Mr. President, and I agree with you. I would be most overcome if we had, if we tabled something for a discussion until we have the org chart and the responsibility of, of these new, um, co-directors and I, and it's, it's also to their benefit also.
Yeah, but this is a legality, only legality, none of, none of a job specific, we're not, we're not spelling out their jobs in this. We never, that's done on SOPs.
But we did reference it.
We only refer to the organizational chart, which y'all got.
Yeah.
But it should be included with the minutes and, and, or with the packet.
Yes, if, if you would like, and you want us to, say, look for a, a further agenda item to be considered, I can go get you a copy of the chart, it's...
Well, we have, that's gonna be the official chart.
Well, the, the official chart is, is what I can give you, it's...
That it?
No, this goes a little more detailed, it's probably more of a basic one.
Needs to show all the details.
Well, but again, the, the chart that the city attorney has, I can get you a copy of that just a few minutes. And it should have been included in the packet, and apologies for that. Uh, the problem with tabling this is if you table this, you're gonna, we're, we're going to have to reorganize the city because there won't be a lapse in authority that the city, any of the city directors can have during the time that you make, do not make a decision.
I think...
What's the legality of, of us getting a, uh, copy of this and then getting it published or amended to the agenda? Is, is that something we can do?
Would be amended.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, sure, and, and again, the, the org chart is, is separate in part, so it doesn't have to be a part of the packet for you to see the organization, it can be separate in part.
Can we see it?
Yes.
I think that would make it easier.
I'd like to do is go upstairs, I'd like to go upstairs, get it...
That way we're all the same.
Bring it back down, so if you would like to table this until the end of the meeting, then I can bring you that stuff.
What time is it?
Uh, I, that, that's, that just gives details about individuals underneath the directorship, so, but...
It's not needed for this specific...
That, that wasn't, that wasn't what was considered by the city attorney when he looked at it.
Yeah, we can, right?
Can we circle that?
Yeah, I didn't know how to say that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be official.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
So when are we gonna talk to Zach?
Yeah.
Public's not voting tonight, yeah?
Excuse me?
The public's not voting tonight, we are.
Well, that's true. We do represent the public.
Paul, is there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, let's go to the next one, we'll put that, which would be number seven. Discussion, consideration to take action to nominate a candidate for the Board of Trustees, Region fourteen, to the TML Health Benefits Pool, term of office from ten-one, twenty, twenty-one to nine-thirty, twenty, twenty-four. If I understand that correctly, you wanna address that?
Um, TML has nominated three candidates within our region. It's up to y'all to pick one of the three candidates. Um, Jason Reynolds, y'all have a copy of it in the packet. The city manager, city of Nassau Bay, he's in our region to be nominated. Mike Barlow, Barlow, uh, city of Wimer. And then Paula Faber, city of, uh, Wharton. Those are the nominees in our region to have, uh, put on the Board of Trustees. It's up to y'all to pick and choose, that y'all have to nominate.
Do you recommend or have an opinion?
I don't know either of the candidates.
None of them?
No. I mean, locally, Nassau Bay would be the closest to us, I would think. I don't know, y'all may know, you know, I, I, I personally don't know.
Uh, no, I, I, I don't, um...
This has been sent out to everybody within our region with TML, so it's, it's across the board.
Um, I, I, I've met Mr. Reynolds, uh, at some of the meetings and stuff, I mean, that's, um, he's been with Nassau Bay. I, I mean, I don't know if I'm right to everyone, but if I was voting, that might be, you all would vote for him.
This is just the nomination, we're nominating, and then it's gonna go ahead and...
There'll be in a battle or something? You're nominating.
Um, oh.
You know more about it than me.
Yeah, let's, uh, have a motion to discuss.
I make a motion, we discuss it.
I'll say it.
I'll say it.
Okay, um... I mean, I, I'm shooting for Mr. Reynolds, just because he's a local boy.
I like that he's, um, on a local veteran support board.
That's a good one.
Any other discussion? Like to take a vote, to nominate Jason E. Reynolds, city manager of city of Nassau Bay. Where is he?
I thought he was the best choice.
Yes.
Yes.
Looks like that passes. Next item. Discussion, in consideration to take action to approve the water improvement project to grant forbidding with Johnny Mercer Associates. Um, do I have a motion to discuss? I make that motion.
That's right.
Uh, so these have been projects that have been in the five-year water replacement plan. Uh, project number two, that's being bid, it's, uh, it's a replacement of four thousand one hundred twenty-eight millimeter feet, and what, what basically you're doing is you're going from a two-inch line that's, that's under somebody, the community at the time called four-inch line. Uh, everything's been engineered, that project has already been engineered, and we have the, the specs. Um, actually, I have the specs in my hand. Um, and then project number, number three, this same thing, going from a two-inch to a four-inch water line to three thousand seven hundred forty-eight millimeter feet.
So is this cases two and three?
Yes, this is two.
Out of five, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
This is already been budgeted, and it's way overdue, and absolutely in favor.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see us go ahead and bid both of these, bid them out, bid them out separately and together, sort of get them flushed out. And I'd like to see us do both of these in this year and catch back up with this program. Our community needs these water lines. It's a total of eight thousand millimeter feet of four-inch water mains on those drawings. This water, decent water, potable water supply is needed for our community. Thank you.
Uh, ready to vote? Uh, where is it?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Let's get one really?
Welcome to John's, not, right, some documents team.
Sure. It's okay, mayor.
Since I didn't make the pass, you would appreciate if you did.
Good.
Be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna hold a brief intermission?
We can go to director's reports, if y'all have, and is anything?
Yes, you have a...
You know, we can...
I, I did not, I'm sorry about that.
Um, mayor's report, um... Yes, uh, one thing we're putting, we're moving quickly on, we've got a lot of discussions and, and getting the details worked out, is, uh, the emergency management. Uh, last weekend was a, was a good, a good trial run for us, and see where we've got a lot of improvements to do, we're gonna try to get the, uh, our, not the trial, we are gonna get the communication going better, and, uh, the support staff, and, uh, we're looking forward to getting that done, um... Let's see. Other than that, uh, we will be following up with the, uh, for October, the SOP for, and, for the, uh, for one and the emergency management. That's all I have at this present time.
Well, we have the two versions.
So that's all we have at this time. Our report, person?
Um, just once again, I'm always impressed at how our community pulls together. Um, the, the competitiveness, I think, because we've been here so much, seems to come pretty easy, and everybody's needs are, um, obviously, kind of the same, power situation was really unfortunate. I think it was pretty understanding, there wasn't much that we could do to control that, so, um, anybody that put communications out there, I appreciate that. Got communication off the Facebook page about my specific street, since we decided to be the last one to join the party, so.
God bless you.
Somebody's gotta be last, we'll take it this time.
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things. Um, to let everybody know that Moody Gardens donated four or five dozen flags to our city for their Stars for Truth program. I put together some star kits, which consists of two flags, one hundred Ziploc bags, and the printed inserts that go with the stars. More than a dozen people have volunteered to package the stars, and they, they also keep stars and share. A total of eighteen hundred stars have been packaged so far. Um, and we're planning a start party in the future, I'll bring more that, more about that up later. We also, um, have stars to donate back to Moody Gardens. Kelly isn't sure where to direct them, maybe you could help look to see? You know, I, my thinking is maybe someone who works in the lobby, someone, somebody wearing a veteran's hat or such would be an easy target. Um, and if you're interested in making stars or sharing stars, contact me or our city secretary, Debbie. I've set up all of them, so you can just come into City Hall.
We had a gentleman give one today.
Awesome, thank you for, and it's nice to hear. Um, also, it's too bad John's not here, I spent a few hours with our interim police chief, chief of police, John Oakwin, and patrolling the beach in the city. I went on a Saturday so I could see what the beach patrol was like, and took a tour of our city. It's the one perk that I've had since being elected, but I was a little disappointed because we didn't get to turn on the sirens and race to arrest any bad guys. Maybe next time. It takes an hour and forty-five minutes to patrol the entire city plus the beach. We took time to stop and talk to several people, and we were flagged down with questions. We did not patrol Beach Comber. Um, I'd like to make sure that, um, they are included with that, and hopefully that was just an oversight that day. Uh, but I wanted to thank John for letting me learn more about our police department, and I'd like to do that again. Also, the kindness project of Starbucks cards, I've had great feedback from that. And, um, I think that, I hope John would let me know some work feedback, so we can hear some good stories, we need that. And I think it's been a positive thing for our citizens and for our police officers. Um, Debbie, I'd like to thank you for putting the names on the agenda, thank you so much. That makes it, uh, so that we understand where it's coming from, I appreciate that so much. Also, when I was first elected, they, we had... Also, when I was first selected, Dave, we had email reminders. Are we still getting those?
For?
For city council meetings.
I did not send a reminder. I sent you the packet though. I mean, I sent you a packet. Everybody gets a packet on Friday.
I cannot get it.
I sent it to your tags. You didn't get it either? Then I don't have corrected emails.
I may have missed it. I went.
Okay, it's just.
I got in at twelve P M. and I've been working noon, and I've been working on this stuff since, and I might have missed it.
It's just a suggestion if we could follow up with that. It was nice to be able to have that reminder. And last, Mayor, you said that when you became mayor, we were gonna work on the hard things. One of those hard things is um um beachcomber. We're gonna have to look into that. Um, I met with um Eric and um Deborah on Friday or Saturday recently, and um we also had invited Joe Juicy, our county commissioner, to come over and and look to see what the issues are there. I think we need to have more attention put on um beachcomber. Um, we don't need seventy-five-year-old couples out there manning the pump in the middle of a hurricane. It just does not look right. Um, and we need to have, if a promise is made by um someone on our city staff, we need to have all of promises kept. So um I want to bring that up. They are, you know, lugging this fifty-pound pump through cap high water and having to um fill it up every two hours of gasoline. Um, this is not what twenty homes need to be doing. Most all the homes have drainage. Once it storms, it'll eventually drain. This community has no drainage. There's no place where it's escape to. So um we need to really put some and now it used to be that there was the dunes was an issue of trying to, but we have no dunes left. They're gone. So um it's something that we really need to spend some time researching and looking more into. Thank you.
Okay, that's some good comments on the beachcomber. I was over there also. I'm just gonna run down my list of assignments for Mayor Morris. Uh, I haven't made many, many reports or comments today. I'm just gonna go down my list. Streets and Drainage Liaison and all street signs. The street signs, I think Debbie can look for it. Maybe until November or something, we'll have new street signs. I think we've decided on colors and what they look like, and I believe we are making up a spreadsheet so that they can be ordered. As far as drainage liaison, our whole community has this drainage problem. And we're gonna have, like, like we're saying, we're gonna have to go ahead and 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 step into this problem, and we do need to look at it so that we we get a decent solution. It's it's a it's a nature, a mother nature problem, really. And here we are, we've got it, but at least we can address it. As far as the water and sewer liaison, we talked about water, we're making some decent strides there. That's part of the infrastructure. When you talk in sewer, really what we're talking about is wastewater treatment plant. The the new wastewater treatment plant was engineered in October of two thousand and three. I'm not sure if you when the original one was built, but I've been down there several times on working with with the guy that's operating it and looking it over, and he's had some problems down there. I think most of them, some of them have been solved. I mean, the new blower is now up and aerated blower is now up and running. It was down a couple of weeks ago. Um, we came through the storm pretty good, okay? I went down this morning and looked at the charts. We had some deviation, but what it is, is we get so much stormwater. And fortunately, there's not many residents, so we don't get much sewage. So, and basically, uh, our discharges were fairly clean. Oh, almost as clean as if we were treating it. When a car goes down, the generator kicks in. Generator can only run a portion of the wastewater treatment plant, not all of it. It can't run the aerators, okay? That means you have a limited time, even on generator, that it can function comfortably. So we, and our wastewater treatment plant, at some point, Mayor, we need to make an assessment and look at the budget for the coming years on doing some basic maintenance and getting the second half of it operating. We've done the electrical. We have the automatic switchover already in place. Um, it may be practical. We can run on line, just like we are now. May be practical to look at at that. Planning and zoning liaison permitting trash code enforcement. I'm not up to speed on that yet. I'm depending on Anna to set us a new standard on that. Um, well, getting canals liaison, we're looking for some bids on that. Utility lia- liaison on all utilities. I have looked at some of that. I think that's that's pretty stable, actually, except maybe our agreements with them. We may, you may be looking at more money in the future if that's something that you don't. Uh, beach maintenance, we've talked about that, and it was a very good discussion. It's the sewer lines and the pump stations. We've extended the bid, I understand, to September the twenty-eighth for Blackbeard. Is that not correct? We should have had our bids come in on the twenty-eighth due to the storm. There's some other items out there. I believe um some other pumps and some electrical work here behind us on one of the electrical panels. So actually, we seem to be in pretty good shape. We've got through the storm pretty good. That's all I have.
All right, um, fire department side, J B E F D has been quite busy in the past month. Had a very large fire in the back, and thankfully nobody was hurt, tenants and firefighters including. They've been quite busy with their EMS and medical services. On that note, with the storm, we're on barrier island. For those of you at home, if you intend to stay down during a catastrophic weather event, you have to be prepared. We're gonna be without power, we're gonna be without water, we're gonna have flooding hazards. If you're not prepared for that, please don't stay. We had frustrating calls during the heart of the storm, and um I just, I really don't wanna put our first responders at risk. If you're not hunkered down, if you're not supplied correctly, please, don't don't stay. These storms are not fun. Um, regarding the storm, it wasn't even seven o'clock in the morning, and the mayor's calling me with his personal vehicle picking me up after I'm waiting through floodwaters and immediately surveying the city and making calls to action. Catastrophic events. When I'm walking through knee-deep water that's flooded in people's houses and homes, I'm considering that catastrophic. When we have eight to ten inches of water blocking people's driveways, I don't consider that so catastrophic. When you flood, the water goes out. I just wanna thank the whole neighborhood for pulling together, sharing information, city staff, mayor, for the guidance and leadership. That's all I have to convey.
Uh, let's pick up item number six, which was the discussion in consideration to take action to report ordinance number twenty twenty-one eleven. As you see, this is the, as we've discussed before at the last couple of meetings, was uh basically that workload of all of these responsibilities will fall in on one person, city administrator, and we haven't had good luck with getting things done with one city administrator, getting overloaded. Um, we've, we've, we all visited on spreading those responsibilities out so we become more efficient. Uh, we've been running through it the last several weeks trial, and we've we've, we've got a lot done, and getting more and more done. Those, all those responsibilities, we started scaling our workforce to the workload, you know, and and things are getting more efficient. And, you know, we're gonna be able to address those things that are falling through the cracks now and moving people within the That's my discussion on 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 this. Uh, did I have any other discussion? I think this answers the question to the uh to where it was added in, which was where it referenced the organizational chart. That is the organizational chart.
And this is available to the public?
Yeah, we'll just amend it to the to the agenda.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I am more comfortable if we state that we're gonna amend this to this particular ordinance. In fact, what are we gonna call it?
I'm just gonna say we're gonna amend ordinance number to include the organizational chart.
Yeah, twenty twenty-one dash eleven.
To include.
The organizational chart.
The organization part dated this day.
So where can the public see that right now?
Good.
I mean, I can put the whole ordinance out there. It's a piece of ordinance. As soon as, I mean, if it passes, I'm gonna put it in the list of ordinances we've had to make.
I know what you're saying.
Attorneys can confuse things more than Bill and Madre.
Any other discussion? Uh, are we ready to vote? On acceptance of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Start with which one?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. And with the amended chart.
When I actually add it to the website, I'll have the chart.
Thank you.
Police report, that's next.
Mayor, first off, I I have to add to uh Russell's comment. Mayor Procham made an excellent comment when he said that at seven o'clock in the morning, our mayor, Mayor Procham, was out there waiting for water after the storm event and and assessing the damages in the city, and and we're very much grateful to have this kind of dedication from the mayor and the council here. Uh, we're very fortunate. We have somewhat dodged a bullet. Uh, we've, it's also lessons learned. We've got a laundry list of things that we could do better in in this situation. Uh, I will wanna also make some comment about some things that were promised uh with flooding in certain additions such as beachcomber. On on Monday, on the end of the storm, myself and our maintenance associate was clearing the beach park stands, and I get up to some of the residents in beachcomber. And they were, uh, as usual, upset about some rain issues causing some low-lying flooding of the street beachcomber. They were very concerned with the hurricane coming in. I did inform one of these residents that we would assist them in getting pumps if necessary, depending on how the situation was post-storm. Uh, we do have to understand that one thing about the pumping system, that is not a viable solution. It does move water, however, it's in a direct violation of G O L rules and regulations of how you pump that water, creating sinkholes and trenches on the beach. So theoretically, um, they do not have a beachfront construction or viewing protection permit, so pumping water is, could be considered in a rules violation of the general land office. After the storm, uh, folks, there's a whole lot of places that were flooded on the island. You couldn't find a pump to be rented by the city until all the flooding issues were no longer issues. There were people that had their houses flooded inside Yalveston, or people with garages flooded, cars flooded and such, and so there wasn't a pump to be found. And the condition of beachcomber, and I do acknowledge that they had six to eight inches of water in the street after the storm, but it didn't compare to the three and a half feet of water we had on Jolly Roger, where our own fire chief and fire department couldn't even get out to respond in certain calls after a limited amount of time. Guys, we do have a sea level issue. We are, we are hit every time we have a major rain and and surge event. And the truth is, uh, it's not just beachcomber. There are several areas that that are very concerning uh as well. So, um, there there are some, uh, we're working on a beachcomber project to evacuate that that water from the streets. We're in the process right now of getting a approval from G O L to dredge out the east side there where you won't need a pump anymore. The water will drain. The problem with that is, and the mayor acknowledged this, he's been over there and studied the area, through the um invent of sand throughout the different storms, uh, we're gonna have to move a lot of sand to be able to even have the the level of drainage needed for that to work. So, uh, it is a a solution. It is being worked on. The mayor and I are going to be over there tomorrow to address this with one of the beachcomber residents who have requested, um, from the G O L to grant us permission to do this. As far as other activities in the storm, we were very uh fortunate that we had no casualties. And um, uh, again, I I appreciate the support that this mayor and council has given. Appreciate the dedication of the staff, Debbie and and Anna and and the ladies in the office were volunteering to come in here and do cleanup or anything else that we didn't do. And so overall, I think it was a, uh, the city staff was there ready to uh to respond. And uh, and we uh, we had a pre-meeting, meeting here tonight, and so um, we are trying to do a better organization as to the emergency action plan, and the emergency action team is for us designating the different duties and responsibilities for team members, and that will be forthcoming uh this week. So, um, everybody will get that out. We'll have a uh, a emergency action plan team meeting very shortly to make adjustments in those duties and responsibilities. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, motion, John.
So may.
Meeting adjourned. On the day he was set.
Over culture of the. Oh, yes. Well, let me know and maybe I can disguise. I'm crabbing. I'm making crab.
I said, I said you. I said you.
That's my secret.